The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, February 10th, 2025 will be called at 7:02. At this time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman Arnett, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we all take a moment of silence to consider the business and the well-being of the citizens in the city of Annapolis. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation on your ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Plurk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderman Huntley.
Here.
Alderman O'Neil.
Present.
Alderman Fendell Charles.
Present.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Present.
Alderman Gay.
Present.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda to postpone ID 1425 Annapolis Santa Run till February 24th, 2025, and also to remove 07-24 Dinghy Docks from the agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
Move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with ID 3125 Proclamation, Mentoring Month and Mentor Citations.
And I think that they could not be here today. Mentoring group are not here, right? I see that. No. Be the next one. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. The next item is ID 3225 Citation, Annapolis Police Athletic League.
Are you trying to say she forgot?
All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you the city citation in recognition of your commitment and dedication to children who participated in the Police Athletic League Swimming Instruction Camp. The Live Water Foundation had a vision and a plan for a positive environment for children to learn to swim and have access to water activities. The Center Lane Swim School joined in the effort and willingly provided the facility and swimming instructors. Through this partnership, 10 city children participated in a six-week session. Children learned proper breathing, floating, kicking, and swimming strokes. Most importantly, the children learned how to feel safe in the water. Is that true? These two organizations provided a tremendous opportunity for children to learn to swim. Thank you for your commitment, contributions, kindness, and love for our children. The city of Annapolis and the Annapolis Police Department are grateful for your partnership. This was presented to Live Water Foundation this day, 10th of February, 2025, and signed by the council.
Nice.
Senator.
Senator. I'm ready to come in and make a couple lines because I can't. Especially when you do want. It's like that's. Fun. Yeah.
So we just want to say thank you so much to the Police, Annapolis Police Department, Ready, Set, Swim, Black Market Bakers, for helping in make this happen for the kids in our community. Something that we all need to do, make it a safer place, a happier place. And also, two of our swim participants, we're going to send to Grom Camp at Capital Sept December. So, one for you. So they're going to wear, take their swimming skills out to the water in our local communities.
So Dean and Evelyn attended every swim session and really came a long way in their swimming skills back floating. And I like Josie, their back float, their confidence, their treading water, front stroke, back stroke, and breaststroke.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That'd be so good.
Thank you.
Can I shake your hand?
And grab it on the paper with the chip.
One more actually.
I don't have to go.
Switch off again.
Now, I'm going to need to, sorry, someone at this end is going to be brave.
Thank you.
Always will be.
All right, guys. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for joining us here. And if you're at home, thank you also for tuning in. I want to talk first, sadly, about a couple of tragic incidents involving juveniles in our community. Last week, a 16-year-old boy was shot at Batesfield while playing soccer. He's lucky he survived the injuries. Police worked quickly to investigate. A suspect was arrested and charged last Friday. These two individuals were well-known to each other. A teen conflict turned into gun violence. It's unacceptable. On Saturday evening, we had our city's first homicide. A 16-year-old who was shot inside a residence in parole. Police are actively investigating and have asked anyone with information to reach out to Annapolis Police Detectives. Both of these tragedies highlight the deadly consequences when ready access to guns mixes with young people in conflict. To the parents, caregivers, family, and friends of those lost, on behalf of this council and the city residents, we extend our deepest sympathies. This is something that no parent should have to endure, and we are all so sorry for your loss. I encourage all families, talk to your children about their conflicts and pressures, and try to help them to navigate the trouble spots in their lives. We can provide resources and community support, but we need your eyes and ears to help us keep these children safe. To back you up, we will be working with the county and state to ensure resources are available to help, including social work, harm reduction, violence interruption, mental health support, safe schools, and more. Please have the conversations, use the resources, and let's be sure that our young people have a bright and safe future ahead of them. Breaking the cycle of violence is not easy, but we must do everything we all can. Now, if we could, we'll take a quick, please, moment of silence. Thank you. Speaking of ways to positively engage young people, I hope we'll get a big turnout on Sunday at Maryland Hall for the presentation of a key to the city to Kendall Dorsey. Mr. Dorsey is the son of Annapolis, is the son of Annapolis, who followed his passion for hair care and has become a stylist to the stars, including the likes of Rihanna, Lizzo, Cardi B, Alicia Keys, and Nicki Minaj. I want to thank our African-American outreach specialist, Atola, for putting this event together and for having Kendall visit local schools to work with students as well as give hair demonstrations at local businesses. The Key to the City presentation in Maryland Hall is free and open to the public. It starts at 4:00 p.m. We look forward to seeing you all there to celebrate Kendall Dorsey's success. Atol is also staging three more State of Black Annapolis events in celebration with the Michael E. Bush Public Library on West Street in honor of Black History Month. Each night's events begin at 5:00 p.m. On Tuesday, it includes refreshments prepared by black-owned businesses. Tomorrow's event is How to Build a Black Arts District in Annapolis. Next Tuesday is Other, The Other Annapolis, A Modern Perspective, if any of you have ever read that book. And the final event is on February 25th, the Celebration of Black Educators, Elected Officials, Entertainers, and Entrepreneurs. Can we get a round of applause for Atola and his team for their performance? One thing to be mindful of tomorrow is that we are currently monitoring potential wintry weather through into Wednesday. The weather may impact the State of Black Annapolis discussions and other events around town, so please check the city website and the Prepare Me Annapolis app for alerts and updates. In order to help our plow crews tomorrow, we are asking residents to move their vehicles off snow emergency routes. You can move your car to a side street, or your driveway, or a city garage for free. They'll be free for residents, starting at noon tomorrow, or probably a little bit earlier, until 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, and we'll be watching the weather for updates on that if we need to extend that period. Of course, we will do that. It is a great service, and it saves you shoveling snow off the top of your car. City officers will be closed in observance of President's Day on Monday, February 17th. Pitt Moira Rec will remain open, but Stanton Center will be closed. There will be no changes to recycling and refuse pickup. Annapolis Transit Go Time will operate on a Sunday schedule. And lastly, tonight, I want to say a few words about Andre Atkins, a Housing Authority Board member and my friend, who recently passed away. Mr. Atkins was the most recent chair of the Hacker Board, and before that, served as president of the Tenant Council for Harbor House and Eastport Terrace. He was a fierce advocate for residents' rights. But more than that, Andre was a good and decent man, the kind of person you want as a neighbor, a friend, and an advocate. Details on his memorial service have not been sorted out yet, but we will share those details when they become available. So now, please, could we all take a moment of silence for Andre and thank him for everything Thank you all. Mr. City Attorney, next on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is reports by committees.
Alderman O'Neil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will meet on Wednesday, February 12th, 4:00 p.m. That is a virtual meeting, so it'll be on Zoom. Anybody would like to participate, we'll be getting an update on our micromobility from our Director of Transportation, Marcus Moore.
Thank you. Alderman Fendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee met on January 30th. At that time, we had a presentation from No Harm VIP and a NAM update. Alderman Huntley, Chief of Staff Pettit, Office of Emergency Management, Chief Simmons, and the African-American liaison, Mr. Ajay, were present to answer questions from the committee. We also had a presentation from the Office of Emergency Management. Alderman Huntley, again, was present for that question-and-answer period. The Annapolis Fire Department update, also, again, Alderman Huntley was there to ask and answer, to ask any questions. And also from our police department. Everyone was present for that presentation. We have decided for this month, I mean, for this year, we're going to focus on one ward a month. So in January, we focused on Ward 1. And this coming Thursday, at 6:30 in Council Chambers, will be our next Public Safety Standing Committee meeting, and at that time, we will be focusing on Ward 4. So I have reached out to Alderman Huntley for Ward 1, today reached out to Alderman Finlayson. Feel free to invite any members of your community. We're going to have it available for folks to ask questions or see our police department, our Office of Emergency, Office of Emergency Management, as well as our fire department. So feel free to come, and we'll set aside that time. Our meeting last time was from 6:30 to 9:38, so we went a bit over time, but it was well worth it, and we invite anyone to come out. We also had a favorable recommendation from our legislation, 02824, property and contraband disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met on February 7th. We began our meeting with a brief report on the comprehensive rezoning by our Chief of Planning, Mr. Leschinsky. He will be back to attend our next meeting to give us a more thorough report. We gave favorable recommendations to two appointments who came before us, Mr. Ramston to the Board of Appeals and Ms. Britt to the Civil Service Board. Both of them received favorable recommendations. We addressed legislation 01024 Outdoor Dining. We postponed action on that legislation until March 7th. We also heard information on 029 Fence Permits. We gave that legislation a favorable recommendation also. And R5324 Legislative, I'm sorry, Executive Pay Ranges, we gave it an unfavorable recommendation. R54 Changes to Position Classifications in the Pay Plan. We had several amendments, six amendments to be exact, most of which received favorable amendments, and I'll speak to those when the time comes a little later in the agenda. And the last piece of legislation was R1 Thompson Street Park. We gave it a favorable recommendation. The next meeting will be on Friday, March 7th, at 1:00 here in Council Chambers. All are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
Thank you. The Finance Committee will have our next meeting on Wednesday, February 19th, and I just wanted to shout it out because I think some of my colleagues will be interested that we're going to have the director or the manager of HR to be there to talk about any positions that were added in the last budget and their status in being hired for, particularly the short-term rental coordinator. So we'll be doing that on February 19th at 10:30 a.m. right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting on Wednesday, February 19th, at 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers. We are expecting a very busy meeting, so be on time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is comments by the general public.
Right, if you're here to make comments, please. We have nothing else besides that. So come up and speak about anything. First person signed up to speak is my good friend, Sven. How you doing, buddy?
As you recall, I saw you the other day down on the city dock and several members, and I brought to your attention the grate in front of my store. I have a picture on my phone from the following morning where the front of my store was once again flooded, and I've shown it to a couple people. I have a home in El Salvador, Seco la frontera de Honduras. It's near the Honduran border in the northeast part of the country, in an area known as Morisón. The town that I live in is Mayangueira. I live in the middle of that town, in Barrio Centro. Next to me is the Alcalde, which is the government office, and the person that is there every day is the Alcalde, who is the mayor. When people come and they need to express what needs to be done, or what they feel needs to be done, or their cares and concerns, they meet with him. They don't call and get put on an answering machine that has you leave a number and will get back to you perhaps in a week, or two weeks, or never. They're responded to pretty quickly. That area of the country is considered the poorest part of El Salvador, which is hard to distinguish if you've been all over the country, because most of the country is poverty-stricken. The nice thing about that, though, is the government listens to the citizens. Reason I bring this up is for two and a half years now, those of us, those businesses downtown have pled with the city to make sure that the pump system, that worked splendidly the first couple of years that they had it there, and we gave great kudos to you guys over it, but it's not maintained and it doesn't work. I listen in here as we have meetings, and you guys had one recently before, I think it was a finding in front of the courts, and everybody here, to a person, stated how concerned they were with the flooding downtown. You see, the pump system that you have installed downtown worked and would have worked for over 95% of the flooding that occurred this year downtown, over 95%. The year after you put it in, the year prior to you putting it in, the barricades downtown in the parking lot were put up 70 times. The following two years, they were put up not once, not once. It's because your marvelous system worked. But you see, certain things need maintaining. They need to be repaired, and when we quit doing that, then there's a price for those of us down there to pay. The point that I'm making is that I'm coming to you again and asking you why you're ignoring our pleas. If you need more photographs, I can provide them. If you need more photographs of the condition of the pumps down in the sump holes, and how filthy and how contaminated and how they don't work, if you need that, I can provide additional because I take them. The thing is, is that I believe that you guys do care, but your system is broken. Our system in El Salvador is not broken.
Thank you, Sven. Next, Lisa Hillman.
Who wants to follow him? But I, actually, I asked to because he came up to me in the early part of this evening and shared that story, and I thought what I had to say is an ideal follow-up. I'm here this evening to, first of all, hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and to my new Alderman, Alderman Huntley. It's a pleasure to see you there. Three points that I want to bring up this evening very quickly about the dock. Seems to be a focus. Number one, just fix the flooding. Focus on, if it's fixing the pumps that he just talked about, let's do that first before doing anything else. Fix the flooding. Don't worry about anything else. Number two, be very, very, very careful and take your time before you focus on the amenities, services, other structures that may be at the dock, because you may very well make a mistake. And here's my point, the third point that I wanted to make, and you all are looking at your, some of you are looking at me, but some of you are looking at your screen. So am I on the screen? Looking at the screen? Okay. My third point is something that came to my attention just about a week ago. I had no idea, and you know the term gobsmacked? Mr. Mayor, you know the term gobsmacked? I was gobsmacked when I read this. Have you all read the Harbor Master's memo to the Maritime Advisory Council that came out last November? If you've not read it, I see one head nodding, if you've not read it, I suggest you reread it. I was shocked to find out that there apparently was no planning with the Harbor Master for that building, or if there were, her concerns were not addressed. How can you build a building, let alone a multimillion-dollar, permanent building in a prominent part of this city, and not engage the people who are going to work in it or use it? That's architecture in one-on-one. Form follows function. What is the function? It's clearly the New Harbor Masters quarters. I urge you to read it. One of her lines is, "She doesn't even have a sightline on where the boats are on a harbor, and this is the woman whom you all have hired to protect the harbor for you." There are serious security and safety concerns, both. So I urge you to read that memo again, just as, you know, we heard Sven say, "You don't seem to be listening," and we know you are, and we know you care. You know, I know Sheila cares. I know Rhonda cares. I know you all care. I know Ross's cares, even though he's not going to be with us in this matter. He'll continue to care. I know Dwan cares greatly. He's a passionate guy. I know you care, but if you won't listen to the concerns and respond to the concerns of your constituents, or those who are trying to prevent you from making a costly mistake like me, then please at least listen to the concerns of your professional staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, next up is Ann Covington.
I'm a longstanding city business and property owner, and I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of Historic Annapolis, where I've served on the board for six years. I want to thank you all for everything that you do for our wonderful city and speak on two specific issues. The first is our mayor's repeated and unrelenting mischaracterization of Historic Annapolis, an organization that has been advocating for the good of our historic city for nearly three-quarters of a century. And second, to reaffirm HA's commitment to the And second, to reaffirm HA's commitment to the City Dock project, including resiliency efforts. Mr. Mayor, Historic Annapolis has materially added to the quality of life and historic character of Annapolis for decades. Your repeated attempts to demean what we have done serves no useful purpose. We are not a small group of narrow special interests who are trying to derail this project. Speaking on behalf of the entire board, our staff, members and supporters, I ask you that you cease the personal attacks of mischaracterizations that are both unproductive and disrespectful. Second, let me be very clear about HA's position with regards to City Dock. At every opportunity to testify, we have spoken emphatically in support of resiliency and progress. It was Historic Annapolis that got this dialogue going seven years ago. When the city faced an ordinance to remove height restrictions at City Dock, landing City Dock on a national endangered list, HA raised money to bring in experts and build community around a vision for City Dock. The administration then decided to make significant changes to the consensus plan, proposing an overscaled building on the water attached to a fragile historic building. We are all in agreement to improve the City Dock experience, to remove the cars, to protect local businesses, to strengthen our vulnerable, low-lying areas that are prone to flooding. We are all in agreement that we want to make downtown a place where people can congregate and soak in the charm of Annapolis. Where we part company is your insistence on pushing for a building that has nothing to do with resiliency, that is too big and too expensive, and will negatively impact a historically important waterfront structure. And considering that you have not officially secured the FEMA funding for this project, Annapolis should laser-focus on what is really important: consistency. Resiliency. Resiliency should come first. Thank you.
Next up, thanks for the support. Thank you. Next up, John Hammond. Thank you. Breaking the law there, John, but you know, because you're used to sit here, we're going to let you off. We all read your piece. It's exciting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Annapolis City Council. My name is John Hammond, and since 1974, I have lived at 141 Monticello Avenue in Annapolis. Once again, I'm before you requesting that you provide some much-needed property tax relief to Annapolis homeowners. Over the past 50 years, property assessments in Annapolis have increased considerably under the state's triennial assessment system. In the mid-1980s, the state of Maryland recognized the plight of homeowners who were facing double-digit property tax assessment increases and adopted legislation known as the Homestead Property Tax Credit, which mandated a 10% annual cap on the growth of property assessments for owner-occupied homes. The credit is just one of many property tax credit programs that the state has approved so as to facilitate the public policy of encouraging affordable homeownership. The Homestead Credit legislation authorizes local taxing authorities to adopt a lower cap on the annual growth of property assessments for owner-occupied homes. Today, all but three counties and the majority of municipalities in Maryland have adopted a lower limit on the rate of assessment growth. Anaromu County has a 2% limit. This reduction in assessment growth has significantly reduced annual growth in the county portion of property tax bills for Annapolis taxpayers. Unfortunately for Annapolis homeowners, the city council has not similarly adopted a reduced growth limit on property assessments pertaining on the city's portion of tax bills. This is particularly bad news for Annapolitans, given last year's arrival of the most recent triennial assessment notices, which in many cases resulted in assessment increase of excess of 30%. Under the current tax rate, a city homeowner so impacted saw an increase of 10% in their tax-year '25 city portion of the tax bill, and faces another 10% increase in each of the next two years. However, the city council can eliminate double-digit tax assessment increases for homeowners. You can set a lower annual cap on assessment increases, thereby providing some much-needed tax relief. By following the county's lead of adopting a 2% limit on homeowner assessment growth, you can level the assessment playing field in Annapolis, just as the county's other municipality, Highland Beach, has done. However, you must move quickly to propose and adopt the change in the Homestead Credit percentage, as the state requires notification of a reduced percentage by March 25th. Time is of the essence, and given the import of this tax relief to city taxpayers, you should act expeditiously. Thank you, and I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always enjoy a graph, and could you explain the chart on the back of your?
Yeah, the graph is what's happened to my assessment individually on Monticello Avenue, and it shows, starting in 2007, which as far as I could get the data back from the county property tax system, it shows the assessment that the county uses for their tax bills, and that's the dotted line, and the solid line is the assessment that is used for the city taxes. And you can see that we pretty much started together in 2007, and you can see that the wide disparity of the assessment being almost three times as large 19 years later. That's a heck of an increase, and the county has protected us on our county tax bills, but unfortunately, the city has yet to take similar action.
Thank you.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hammond, I have a question. What city services would you be willing to give up in order to?
Give up the city council?
Well, he could do that, but what city services would you be willing to give up in order to maintain a lower tax rate?
I can come back at a later meeting. I don't want to.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Hammond, I just want to clarify. We're not talking about a lower tax rate, right? We're talking about a change in the assessed value. I think that's.
Okay.
The tax rate is not going up.
I thought he mentioned on the back that this was mentioned.
Those are tax assessments, as the graph has indicated. Those are the assessments. I can come back anytime you would ask and talk about the services that we could save some money on, but it's not what I'm here to talk about tonight, and I know you'll appreciate that.
And I would just point out for the public that this council in seven years has only done one tax increase. Your values have gone up, and of course, those increases happen, but I will say, we live in one of the best places in America. Our taxes are lower than Alexandria, they're lower than Bethesda, they're lower than Texas, they're lower than Florida. This is our property taxes, right? And they're lower than Kenny Bunkport and Carmel, just to throw in a couple of boutique places.
Yeah, but, Mr. Mayor, you must understand that the tax rate is only half of the equation. And as I pointed out, we have seen assessment increases of 30% in the last triennial assessment. You keep the same tax rate every year, but the taxes that I write a check for go up every year, and in most cases, there are at least four of you on this council that had 30% increases in your assessments last triennial assessment, and your tax bill for the city of Annapolis went up 10%. So keeping the tax rate at a level is fine, but it's not the whole story.
No, the assessments, we agree with you, like, and we all struggle with affordability here. This is supposed to be listening, so I apologize. Alderman Shanahan.
Well, this can also be learning, too.
I'm glad you brought up learning because every single time a housing affordability bill has come up, you've come here and testified against it to address our housing shortage, and whether they've passed or not, you fought those tooth and nail. We have a housing shortage. That means the value rises exponentially. This is a consequence, man.
No, this is, this is an affordability issue. It costs people on fixed income, as a retiree, more and more money to pay those taxes every year. So this is definitely an affordability, a housing affordability issue, and you want to be on the page to reduce the assessments so that we can all afford to pay our annual taxes.
And when there is a shortage of supply, as there is.
That's another issue, and I'm not, I'm not here to talk about that. I'm talking about.
And when there is a shortage of supply, as there is in Annapolis, which has been documented in several reports, the value goes up exponentially, and that is what has happened here.
But we are here, we are here to listen, so thank you.
Please let me finish, sir. I am sympathetic. I would like us to be able to lower taxes, but unfortunately, as documented by the Urban 3 study, we have an issue paying for our own infrastructure based on our land use patterns. And when you have come up here and fought against every single piece of legislation put forward to cut down on that issue, it comes across as crocodile tears.
Well, I'm afraid you don't understand the issue that I bring to you tonight, that it is a housing affordability issue. Homeowners are leaving Annapolis because they can't afford the increasing taxes that these higher assessments cause. That's an affordability issue, and it needs to be addressed. The county has addressed that with a 2% assessment growth limit. There's no reason why the city can't do the same thing.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Always a pleasure to be here.
Always love seeing you. You know that.
And I brought my Santa hat because I thought.
Is the truck out there?
The Santa run didn't, I can't get the fire truck in the garage.
Another problem with the garage.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward and speak? Please come forward. Tim Leahy.
That's going to be a very tough act to follow. But, Tim Leahy, 110 Archwood Avenue in Murray Hill, have lived here for 39 years. I did have to take a deep breath after all of the things that we are hearing tonight. Issues that are important to the city, public health, housing, public safety, there actually is more that unites us than separates us. So I do, I think, I think the public discourse is important. I'm actually thrilled to hear the, to have this conversation between John and Brooks aloud in public testimony because we were told years ago that we weren't supposed, you weren't supposed to talk back to us, right? And I don't agree with that. I think we should be able to have this kind of conversation, honestly. But I'm here to talk about what I, what, two weeks ago, our council, all of you, I know most of you pretty well, passed a resolution about resilience for downtown, and I'm going to echo what Lisa said, pretty much, 1, 2, 3. There were projects approved two and three years ago on the Compromise Street side to start the process. So I would ask you, using your influence over the city manager and the departments of the city, to go in and start that project. It was permitted. Me again. Also, break the BURMs and the city, and the flood protection project on the City Dock side into two pieces. Finally, tomorrow night, the HPC will vote to probably allow the Meritane Welcome Center project to proceed, but there's actually more, a more important thing than the HPC issues. The design does not meet the Harbor Masters requirements, and it is twice or three times as big as it requires to be, meaning $2 to $3 million more than we need to spend. So you have the influence and the power with your committees to change these things, so please do so.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Thank you for that, too. Thank you.
Any questions? I don't, I can't promise to argue as eloquently as John can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Mayor Buckley and the council, thank you. I didn't sign it, but it's Richard Montaner. I live on Franklin Street. There are two items on the agenda that I'd just like to speak to.
And full name, address as well, the street number?
47 Franklin.
47. Thank you very much.
You know me well because you zip by my house often, which brings up the first item that I'd like to speak to, the speed monitoring cameras. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think that it will help in the safety of our community. Because I live on that corner of Shaw and Franklin, I witness every day, all day long, cars just zipping right through. It's like they live on Cathedral, and Cathedral has no stop sign down by the courthouse. So I think they just think that it's just another road to run. And I know I've been on the porch, and I've saluted you many times going past the house on your motorized vehicle, and I would just support whatever we can do to help the safety of our community, because there is an accident that's going to happen someday at that corner, and it's not going to be pretty. So that's one thing I really support, Harry, and the initiatives of the other gentleman. I don't know whether your next item has been polled, 0725?
Been polled, yeah.
It has?
Yep.
So I'll save my comment for a later date?
We'll see. We'll see if it comes back. Definitely not ready for primetime.
With regard to my comment with that, with 0725, there seems to be a lot of controversy as to what a dinghy is. A dinghy, according to Merriam-Webster, for those 40 and under, is a dictionary, or maybe 73 and younger. But the definition of a dinghy is a support, is a support tender to another boat. And so when the ordinance was written, it was written specifically for a dinghy to either support going from a mooring ball or from a visiting craft or a vessel to have access to get to shore. And so that's the definition of a dinghy. So if you're thinking about, and the ordinance also speaks to a small boat, well, what is the definition of a small boat? I'd like somebody to define that. So when you, if this comes up again, I think those are something that need to be addressed, and the Harbor Master needs to weigh in on it, and the advisory board also, I think, for the harbor. Because when you start allowing a 90 horsepower, I know you don't want to talk about it, but if you start allowing 90 horsepower, which the boat is now two feet wider and 17 feet long, it adds a whole dynamics to what the city now has to give on dock space for those that already have the permits and the decals to legitimately keep our boats on the docks. So are you going to increase the size of every dock in town to accommodate a bigger boat? And do we really need 90 horsepower boats that are supposed to be coming off of another boat? Anyway, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Please come to the microphone, state your full name and address. Been a while.
Bob O'Shea, 129 Granville Avenue. I actually was not planning on speaking until I heard some people speak tonight. Three people brought up very good points, especially housing authority. This reminds me of 12 years ago. This is rerun number two in regards to the way the city of Annapolis works, and know the people who run the city don't care about the residents. You're correct. And I'm sorry I say it that way. You also have individuals who speak, and this is the second meeting I've been to. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to come to a few because. because of issues over the last three years that have been resolved on my end. But at the last meeting I was at, someone else chimed in in regards to not fully understanding. In this room probably stands one individual who knows more about numbers for this county and this city than everybody in the room combined, and he just spoke. And for someone to question, first of all, do we need affordable housing? Yes, we do. Do we need affordable housing next to a $1.7 million home that you're going to put high-density, potentially Section 8 housing in the city? No, we don't. There's other areas it can be. For your information, don't smile. You're wrong.
Do you mind?
There's one other issue is you were incorrect in regards to our taxes did go up because Anaronda County, which Annapolis is combined with, if you go look at the assessment percentage that Anaronda County was three years ago to what it is now, it's the factorization number, it was increased. So on top of our assessment going up, the value that they're going to tax it went up also. So our tax did go up on that assessment.
I agree, from the county.
But I was straightening up where you said our tax did not go up. It did. The other issue is, it is a little bit of a hypocrisy that a city council that wants to ban leaf blowers thinks that a dinghy has a 90 horsepower engine on it. And I stole that from another individual here today. I love the city of Annapolis. We really do need things that need to be fixed. But unfortunately, if you don't understand the whole scope... Perfect example, you had a meeting which was very good with the parking people. Was it two weeks ago? Three weeks ago? The actual people who run the Parking Authority? The guys who run the garages? And the guy kept coming back and pushing it back in your guys' faces on the 700-page document. A parking garage should be something where I drive in, I think I'm going to be here for 30 minutes, but I'm ending up having a good time enjoying. And I only put in two hours, but since I only put two hours in, I'm going to get fined $50, which again, you guys didn't understand either, instead of just, no, make me pay for four hours like every other parking garage in the United States. You guys are being taken advantage by that contractor. And the city residents are being taken advantage. Again, how do you go through a 700-page document? It's difficult. But you guys had an excellent meeting with him, and you pushed some things back that just made no sense. Appreciate the time, you guys.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Okay, I declare this lively public hearing closed. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda is consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar?
Got to get a motion. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Madam Superior Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Yes.
Alderman Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda is the legislative action, beginning with first readers. And the first item is ordinance 0525, speed monitoring cameras.
Could I get a motion on 0525?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can we refer 0525 to Rules of City Government Committee, Transportation Committee, and the Transportation Board? Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is resolutions, beginning with R225, demonstration program to build green roofs on city bus shelters.
Got to get a motion to adopt R-225 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppo... Alderman Savage, before you.
I just wanted to point out, I know this is going to Finance Committee. I would like to refer to Environmental Matters.
That seems like a better place.
I would be happy to.
It would cost the money. And it is down here to go to Environmental Matters, too. Thank you.
The one thing, just to be upfront with the sponsor, I do want to find out if it's better to do this as a budget amendment or if we should move forward in this. I think it might hinge on if we could find funding.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda and resolutions is R625, nonprofit vendors during fall 2025 boat shows.
So moved?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll refer that to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda and resolutions is R725, itinerant merchant sales in the historic district during calendar year 2025.
Is there a motion to adopt R-725?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll refer that to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is second readers, beginning with ordinance 02824, police department property and contraband disposal.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2824 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I see we have an amendment. Alderman Savage.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I move amendment two?
Please, yes.
Second.
So this amendment would simply make it a requirement that any confiscated bikes would need to get turned over to nonprofits to distribute them to Annapolis residents in need.
Sounds like a good one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could I get a motion to adopt it as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt O-242824 on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer. Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is 02924, fence permit requirements related to buildings and construction standards in Title 17.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Can you move these amendments all together or not?
Yep.
Except for Finlayson?
Well...
Or should we go through them one at a time?
I would like to, but we have a couple of amendment corrections.
Okay.
So I think we could move one and two at the same time.
Is there more?
I've got five amendments coming up, one from Alderman Finlayson and four from Alderman Savage.
I do apologize, but we found some errors that we had. I know there are only two listed. I believe the law office took down some of the ones that had errors, so we tried to limit confusion. We have printed ones instead.
Sir.
But to start off, the two that are posted, I could move one and two to start.
Yeah, please.
Second.
So, I'm confused now. Is there a way, amendments three?
No, hold on to those. I'll just get one and two out of the way.
Just on amendment one first, so let's move that and explain that to everybody.
So amendment one...
And two, right?
And two. So one simply makes an adjustment so that the Building Board of Appeals makes it a shall instead of a may as far as when they find an error that it shall be corrected, as opposed to may. And then number two inserts language that was accidentally removed during drafting. So this is language that's currently in the code, and we just realized it was strictly my mistake.
Okay. First and a second on that. All those in favor of amendment number one and number two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, amendment number three comes from the Rules Committee. After much discussion, we wanted to strike the 400-foot length of fence. So that's the...
We've got a second on that, sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Point of information, are you reading from the number three that she just gave out or...
Yes.
The three. Okay, so this one is true.
So which... Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of the amendment sponsor?
Alderman Huntley?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Alderman Finlayson, this would, your amendment would change it so that the regulations in this rule, which currently only apply, if it were to pass, to fences longer than 400 feet, would now be applied to all fences. Is that correct?
Yes.
So a fence that's 20 feet would then have to go through this same permitting process?
Yes.
Okay.
And part of that discussion was about whether it was linear fences or not. And I think that was the motivation behind it.
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, and just to provide some additional comments on that. So the gray area that I'm trying to clear up was that we had a very long length of fence removed, and it was removed without any permits, and they didn't have permits to rebuild. So it kind of sat. A very long fence like that could have a lot of impacts on trees and neighbors. And so typically, fences are demolished. And I had mine taken down and rebuilt. Usually, it's all done at the same time. So in most cases, it's not going to be an issue. But this just makes it clear that basically, they should do all that at once.
Okay. Alderman Gay?
I'm just curious if the, if one of the sponsors would accept a friendly amendment so that if you had the, or, I'm sorry, so that erection would be the cause for the permitting process, not demolition?
This is for Alderman Finlayson?
It is her amendment. Because she does have, "No existing fence over 400 feet in length shall be removed or demolished until a complete application." I mean, do you, I guess, strike the whole amendment is my thing.
I'm sorry, you're, I'm like, what's your question?
You're changing the language to include "no existing fence over 400 feet in length shall be removed or demolished until a complete application is submitted." And I'm saying I sympathize with the alderman who introduced this amendment and concerns as it relates to people building fences in communities with or without a permit and it changing the character of the community. But I'm concerned with the, you know, the demolition. As I shared during our lunch, I think that is a personal decision that a property manager chooses, can choose to make. And I don't, for example, if we owned, you know, properties, you know, side by side, and I had a fence up, and I tore the fence down, how is that affecting or impacting your quality of life?
Alderman Savage?
Well, that's what my original intention, I had that 500 feet, because I only wanted that requirement to apply to the long stretches of fences because those would have more impact on people, more residents. And in my case, it did on about 12 of my residents. And so, but I agree with you. As far as smaller individual homes, I don't think it matters. That's not what I was trying to target. But the committee wanted to remove that requirement, have it apply to every... So as far as, you know, I'm fine either way, but that's kind of where I...
I would see, you know, ask my colleagues, just to vote this amendment down. I get the concern of the committee. But I also feel for the property owner who wants to make a decision, you know, on their property. And I think when you're getting the Planning Department involved in that, and I don't know if you've all seen the email that we got earlier from a constituent saying that they had a, you know, very contentious a planning issue going on, and neighbors were almost coming to blows over a fence. And so I think, in places where we can, you know, not have government be so involved...
So is there an amendment? There's nothing, no friendly amendment?
Well, no friendly amendment. I would just, I'm curious of the positions of my other colleagues and if the amendment is necessary. I liked what the alderman from Ward 7 suggested. Originally, the 500 feet would apply to larger fences. But yeah, that's just my personal opinion.
But Alderman Finlayson, that's coming out of your committee, though, right?
Yeah, this came out of the Rules Committee, after much discussion about it.
And I would just say, never put a fence up without having to get some permits.
Of course.
I've never experienced that yet.
Yeah, I said, you know, putting the fence up, I could see you having to go to the Planning Department and get the applications, et cetera. But if you're taking down a fence, it's not drastically changing the quality of the neighborhood. It's not impacting my neighbor's quality of life in any way, shape, or form. I think one of the arguments that was used earlier is that, okay, if you put up the fence, you know, the paths in the community change, wildlife paths, community change, and shade, all of those things. So I get that. But tearing down the fence is in no way, in my personal opinion, impeding a neighbor's rights.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
So in committee, the sense of this was to take out the length, and it would fall back to the long existing code regarding both erecting and demolishing a fence. It's also code that has to do with the height of fence. It varies by various wards and conditions. In the R2NC, you can't have a fence above four feet front of the front line of the building. And there's a whole host of other codes. So the sense from the committee was, don't put the length in. Let it fall back to the existing fence code. To the issue of taking down a fence, a fence has two sides. One side is the property owner, and the other side is the adjacent property owner. And the purpose of the zoning legislation is to make sure that both sides have a say in what's happening with the fence. I just had that in the property adjoining me with Mike Myron's house. And we agreed, and we agreed on the different heights of the fence and the composition, and we split the cost. But we did it together because it's a fence on our mutual property line. And I don't think this notion of the property owner can just do whatever they want is antithetical to the very nature of zoning. And good fences make good neighbors, and agreeing on the fence makes even better neighbors.
I will go to Alderman O'Neill, and then back to you, Alderman Gay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will say that I just spent about six months last year in a dispute on neighbors on Bates Street over one neighbor taking down a fence, and the other one absolutely incensed that they took down the fence because the neighbor that took down the fence, her friends and family are all now spilling into the other neighbor's yard. So good fences do make good neighbors, and it does matter what you do, whether you put up a fence or take down a fence.
Alderman Gay?
I call BS. No, 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 no. I'm talking about the instance in that, you know, you have to have a fence to be... Why not put in the code that all single-family houses built have to have a fence in the front and back? I just think that is... I just think, I'm not saying that we should be, you know, throwing planning out of the window. But when, if I'm tearing down a fence on my property, and the biggest concern is that somebody's walking on my side of the grass, I mean, I just, I personally, I would be pissed off if I was a homeowner that I had to spend so much money to go get architects to have drawings put in place. Maybe in some cases, you have to get an attorney to come to the Planning Commission meetings, if it goes that far, to go to Board of Appeals, if it goes that far. I just think we are, you know, putting our hands too far into personal disputes. But I'll also call the question because this is, clearly, we know where this amendment is going, and I don't, I won't want to waste time.
I mean, I'd like to let Alderman Finlayson just give the last word, but we should just vote here. The votes are here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with you. I don't agree that two people own the fence. Only one person pays for the fence, one person owns the fence. Now, if you have a collaborative relationship and you... Now, if you have a collaborative relationship, and you guys agree, then that's something totally different, but that's not always the case, okay? And we did talk about that. So you're absolutely right, we are, and we had this discussion at length today, at lunch. It's a property rights issue, but this is the amendment that came out of committee.
Alderman Shanomeyer--
I am going to piggyback off of what my colleagues had said here. Our planning process can get a little onerous, and for something this small, it is a bit invasive, and there is ultimately a person who paid to put that up. I think it's wonderful, the collaborative relationship that you had with your neighbor. The situation Alderman O'Neill described is unfortunate, and I very much understand your neighbors and constituents' frustrations in that situation, but if it, ultimately, whoever owned that fence has the right to operate that on their property. So I understand where you're coming from, but--
And you don't want Brian Callahan taking down his fancy gardens in the nude, so imagine if he did that.
In that case, if he takes his down, I'll help his neighbor build a new one. Very tall, very tall one, but--
Okay. All those in favor of amendment number three say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Sorry, I'm close to another one. You're what? You're opposed?
We just did amendment number three, Finlayson's amendment, that's right, right? Yep. Did you have something to add to that?
So you called for a ayes on amendment three?
On amendment three, yes. Let's do a roll call.
Okay. I'm Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
No.
Alderman Savage.
No.
Alderman Arnett.
Committee, committee.
Alderman Huntley.
No.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
No.
Alderman Felison.
No.
You're a member?
But this is my personal vote, is it not?
Okay. I'm just supporting--
I wasn't voting for the committee.
I'm supporting the committee, that's all. Okay, amendment number four, thank you.
There is a amendment four. It's not in Granicus.
This also needed an error, I'm sorry, needed a correction because it had an error, and--
Did we get a new?
Amendment four.
Amendment four.
Everybody have a copy of that?
And so, yeah, so the--
I have a new four.
Correct one should read on page three and line one, after height, insert, and within three feet of the proposed fence. So again, what is, what this is trying to do is, our current code requires that all the trees in a backyard have to get shown on a plan, just for a fence. What I tried to do is make it easier to say only trees over five inches in diameter, and what the committee, because this really came out of, I think, Environmental Matters, or maybe it's Rules, but in any case, what the committee want to do is make it even easier, which I agree with, is just to say only trees over five inches in size that are within three feet of a proposed fence. So again, just identifying ones close to the fence, not in the whole yard. So this is just, just width. Yeah, so this is, again, just an attempt to make the code easier.
Excuse me.
It wasn't--
We got a first and a second on that? Yep.
Second.
Thank you.
First.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You were talking.
We're looking for the amendment.
We don't have it in Granicus.
Should be in packet on--
It's not in Granicus, because it doesn't make respect.
It's in paper.
So I have--
So I'll hold until you get a copy, I apologize.
I haven't changed, but that's the--
May I answer a question?
Yeah, yep.
I'd say no, but--
Do you have a copy of the amendment?
I do have it. Alderman Pindell Charles was asking about--
I had a question. I'm assuming that this amendment did not go through the Rules and City Government Committee. Am I correct?
Alderman Savage?
It went through both committees, my record.
But we did not take--
We only had hard copy there also, so--
Oh, okay.
We stuck this up in Granicus.
That's what I was asking. I just assumed it wasn't, because it was a hard copy and not on Granicus, I figured it didn't go through Rules and City Government. That was my question.
No, I'm sorry, it was post, I believe it was posted on Granicus, but it was removed once we found there was an error in it. And we wanted to try to reduce confusion and just have it in being printed at that point.
Now I understand better. Thank you.
Well, may I ask, it was discussed.
Yes.
But we did not take a position on it, or didn't we?
I don't, I don't remember.
Because there's no indication that there was a vote on it.
I thought you did, but I could be mistaken.
And would you just want to explain it one more time before we take a vote on it? So it sounded pretty simple, within three feet of the fence.
Within, it just basically have to show all trees over five inches in diameter that are three feet near a fence. Again, our current code says that they have to show all the trees, we're just trying to reduce it to make it easier.
Thank you. Everybody okay with that?
Don't go any further.
We didn't, kind of half-voted. Let's try again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Amendment number five.
All right, this one also was, it should have this printed, too. It came out of a discussion that we had in committee, Alderman Gay had a good point about, again, trying to simplify the process, because he was asking, and this is in current code, when somebody submits an application, they have to show all these things, be it right-of-way, utilities, trees, topography, nearby homes, et cetera, et cetera. So he said, understandable, that seemed like a lot for just typical homeowner, and so I was trying to figure out ways to make it easier. So what I came up with was moving things like public right-of-way easements and utilities to things that staff will look at using our GIS system, because we have all that information in our GIS. Homeowners may not have that easily available to them, and staff testified saying that they already look at those things anyway, so again, this is just to take some of that pressure off the homeowner.
So moved.
Questions on that? Thank you.
We have to move it, I move it.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second, yeah.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Could I get a motion on it as amended, with the four amendments that passed?
Five, oh, yeah.
Four.
So moved.
The fifth one didn't pass, did it?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Your--
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-2924 on third reader?
Second.
Before we come over and inspect all your fences, could I get a roll call? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Felison.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank, I never thought I'd get in the weeds this much on fences, but thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Agenda is complete, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, who has anything else for good order? Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just say happy 70th, is it 70th birthday to our mayor?
78.
I kid, I kid.
Not yet, not yet.
Happy belated birthday to our mayor, who celebrated his birthday this past Saturday. I hope you had a fantastic--
He was busy making business cards.
All right.
I helped you celebrate your birthday by not knocking on your door while I was out on Saturday.
All right, but you were knocking on my neighbor's doors, they called me.
I was, I walked right by your house.
They called me to check you out. Okay, could I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, Alderman Arnett.
I just, I wanted to pick up on something that was said. I've long felt that there ought to be a place where we could have dialogue with the constituents, and I thought we did have, even though we're not supposed to, some good dialogue tonight, and maybe we have another council meeting that's open-mic night or something like that. I mean, we just have precious time outside of our wards to talk about these issues, and I think they're big issues. Anyway.
Thank you.
I want to wish that on you for next council.
For the good of the order, while we're talking about that, I agree with everything Alderman Arnett just said, and I'd encourage anybody watching to come to my coffee shop tour, that I'm out talking with people pretty much every Wednesday morning.
Great, awesome. Okay, motion to dismiss, or whatever.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.